Okay, adequate notice, this meeting is provided by the Central District News for the Asbury Conference, the Middletown Hatch and the Middletown Township Public School District Website, and the Posting and Search Notice at the Office Team Leader Administrative Offices in each Elementary, Middle, and Secondary School in the district. We'll call.
This is Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. DeFranco.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
This is Wright.
Here.
This is Stone.
Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session for student matters.
Do you have any students?
Oh, sorry, oh, students, excellent. Um, High School South, Marina, Liana, Juana.
Good evening and happy holiday season for Middletown High School South. The South School community continues to be busy both inside the classroom and out. Middletown South's Battle of the Classes kicked off in the philanthropic competition in October. Each class sold wristbands and collected donations for breast retention, which is an organization that supports women in crisis who are battling breast cancer. Together, students and staff collected and donated over $1,000 to support the cause. South had the honor of having World War II veteran, Mr. Steinhardt, come to speak to several history classes regarding his experiences. On November 28, members of Journalism 2 and Eagle House staff attended the Garden State's Lasting Press Association Fall Conference at Rutgers. Students attended seminars on different aspects of journalism and were inspired to bring the ideas they gave home to South's journalism program. Recently, our teaching sessions have been extremely busy. Rose of Jericho, a film by Vic Peter, Courtney Gol, and Keely Gilman will be screened at the Academy de Bella Art Venus in Rome, Italy on November 26. Clown, a film by Keely Gilman, Mitchell Han, and Julie Maddow will be screened in Anchorage, Alaska at the Anchorage International Film Festival in early December. Clown was also screened at AMC Theater in Times Square, New York City as a part of the All-American High School Film Festival. The Tinker was screened as a part of Best of the Best at the New Jersey School Board in Atlantic City. Our model chapters and heroes and cool kids training continues so that our students are prepared to speak with middle school children about the current topics and scenarios that they will encounter throughout their teen years. Last week, Middletown South hosted a strategic planning forum. The event was well-attended by community members, teachers, and administrators. Yesterday, Holiday Express came to High School South to perform holiday classics for many of the district's special education students. It was a fun event for everyone involved. Our Eagles helping the community food drive, in part with Battle of the Classes, is in full swing right now. Middletown South's fall play, titled "You," written by our own Alexis Cosack, will take place this week on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. There will be a matinee show for local senior citizens this Thursday during the school day. Our culinary students will be prepared along for the senior citizens that day as well. Our generous PFA has been sponsoring tech dinners for our young actors and actresses throughout the play preparation process. Our first NCAA signing ceremony of the year took place last week. During the ceremony, we celebrated 11 of Middletown South's future collegiate athletes. The following were some accomplishments of our fall athletic teams. Field hockey was the short conference A-North Division Champions and the NJSI A-North Two Group Three Sectional State Champions. Girls soccer was the short conference A-North Division Champions and the NJSI A-North Two Group Three Sectional Champions. Girls cross country added a impressive season with the short conference A-North Champions, Monmouth County Champions, short conference Champions, NJSI A-North Two Group Three Sectional Champions, NJSI A-North Two Group Three State Champions, and our entering league champions of the number one seed. Girls gymnastics team came in second place out of the entire state for the state's competition in November. We are looking forward to seeing everyone at High School South next Thursday for the annual Thanksgiving football game. Go Eagles!
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
From High School North, I see Jasmine, Yomaz.
November may have been a short school month, but here at North High School, our students are always getting things accomplished. 14 of our students were accepted into the all-shore choir. High School North will be hosting all the practice sessions this season. 20 seniors will be taking the school evaluation test on the summer fifth and sixth to demonstrate their proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing skills of their choice or second language. Today, North Town Club formed our townhood of middle schools. It will perform a sensory-friendly performance tomorrow with special needs. And Friday, they'll perform with senior citizens. Our town will be open to the public school on Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM. Hope to see you there. Students raise donations for the Red Bank Park. Really for life, and Middletown helps the zone this month. The North Lions club connected Flag Rock in the bubble from November 13. On Friday, November 22, High School North will present a Shex and Lucius duet for the 40-year-old nation. We definitely exceeded our goal this year. Congratulations to the following athletes who will be playing collegiate sports next year. Olivia Serbo, Bill Hockey, and across at St. Thomas's Williams. Natalie Hahn, swimming at St. Paul University. Tyler Klitsky, wrestling at Brad University. And Terry Rinn, soccer at South Carolina Athens. Hot talks to their coaches for helping these athletes develop their skills to the next level. Jane C., Eve Devanay for me, Megan Farri, Matt Serschel, Shishel, and Shannon. John Hoey is the newest member of the Home Town Park under the 17-minute club from the time of 1657, and Anthony Pavani is the newest member of the Home Town Park under the 18-minute club from the time of 1740. The Home Coming Boncar and Pepper Island will take place on November 16. Also on the 26th, High School North will be hosting 215 middle school students from Thompson, North, and Becher, plus 50 high school sophomores in our first district forum festival. They'll perform together and individually in theaters from 12:00 to 1:00 PM. Molly United Nations advisors, Patricia Kelly, Serena Kirkbaum, accompanied North students to Princeton University for the Molly U Conference on November 16 and 15. Holy interviews for sophomores still in place today. After the forum program, four new short forms made into the festival. The Nerous Short Films, Alon, Angel Ali, Red at Dawn, and Voices are official selections in Northeast Harrods Bus this summer boarding at 4:30 at TNX Innuis. Over the break, Go May for the Asian Nationals and heard casting award-winning film, Beyond the Universe, where David Ture of the UN by Master, Cross Garcia, and Pudal Soccer. Asian Nationals was also given the opportunity to work for the Christian Rare Foundation and the process she had created in Kitten, Thompson, and Lewis Guzman. This year, the North Lions are heading to the Swamp to face South U of International Thanksgiving Game on November 28. The English teachers have received numerous copies of Nobelville novels for their classes for in-reading and test portion of the book class. David Sharnar, through Forbes, who had her in the 2017 and September, and will be visiting individual classes this summer. Last week, Karen Burnham from the Council of Hon and International Educational Exchange addressed our interested students on the full navigator scholarship opportunities to study and travel in the North Bay country. That's it from North. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I need a motion to go into executive session for Personnel and Student Matters.
So.
All of them? Uh, both.
Sorry.
I'm Miriam. Yeah, neighborhood. What grade are your kids in? Oh, I'm something. I think, was your guy coming out of art class and gave you the way?
I'm Miriam. Yeah, neighborhood. What grade are your kids in? Oh, I'm something. I think, was your guy coming out of art class and gave you the way?
Yeah.
As a result of this meeting, the five Central District News for the Asbury Conference, the Middletown Hatch, and the Middletown Township Public School District Website, and the Posting and Search Notice at the Office Team Leader Administrative Offices in each Elementary, Middle, and Secondary School in the district. We'll call.
This is Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. DeFranco.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. Lee. Here.
This is Wright.
Here.
This is Stone.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Our Lucas, a fifth-grade student at Middletown Elementary School, passed away on November 17, 2014, after a long illness. Our prayers are with his family and parents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with our committee reports. Technology.
Good evening. Uh, two items to mention on the agenda. First one is unit access management to some of office server to replace the relationship. Um, our mission is to face annual testing for new challenges and processes. Um, we use both access to the LLCs by becoming a local city. It's a web-based platform that we use for years for testing services. Since inception of online testing model, we've only been using cash servers before we set up in schools. Recent data has now changed to send to all base cash server models, which means more streamlined. One cash server is the higher digit, and no longer need to use 17 individual cash servers. Um, so all of the number rate, uh, number rate, uh, created a single cash server, which will hold a digital data over it, and he commissioned 17, um, virtual servers that are moving to the next century. The two models are thus much more efficient, um, and also streamlined for test taking and student management portion of the testing. Uh, the second element at the time is Google Originality Reports, Google Classroom Data Pilot. Um, recently applied for and are a part of Google Originality Reports, Google Classroom Pilot. Um, Google Originality Reports is a feature that brings, uh, Google search rights to student assignments and great interface in our Google Classroom. So basically, learning tools off teachers as students thoroughly review their work and if you, if you're in permission of unintentional plagiarism. So it can scan student doc and students assigned reports, and also to show them that how they could be considered plagiarized if they put those information off online. Um, but also assistance to the staff and makes their career process easier because it helps to, uh, to assist. That is now fully in place. Um, even on to all staff, the resource of how to use the tool was sent out last week, and whether it's tried this morning, we have some staff who do the rest of the tool, which is a city. Um, it is a pilot, so if staff realize that are, are, they're recommended that they provide feedback, um, so they can better collect, generate product and support product. Uh, but feedback is not applied for its use.
Uh, just a question about that. So it's effectively online, right?
Correct. There are a number, number, number of other apps that are out there. Um, all of them are course-associated, so this one's part of the question.
Uh, more, if you know the technology aspect of it, but from a curriculum perspective, is there any change to our, uh, guidance to our, our classroom professionals about not using this tool at all, and what happens when this tool flags something so that the student is not just docked, or it's because of computer plagiarism, that they're plagiarizing?
That one, I don't have any answer for that. That would be more on the curriculum side. Um, you just connect the tool up, that would be sort of.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, I'd be surprised if we could get some feedback on that from a curriculum side. You know, just how it's going to be used, how it's going to be implemented, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to see kids getting docked just because, you know, a teacher said, well, you know, the Google checker said you plagiarized, so not to point without a chance to really discuss it. It's just simple and serious.
Especially when the kids are using the, um, internet, they do a lot of their work. They might not realize they're doing that part, you know, because they're being told that, use the technology, use the technology to get your information, and they're doing that a lot.
Well, the tool on the student side of the question is just, that's just a reason for it. It allows the students to check their homework against possible plagiarism. So it'll learn prior to submission that says that this could be considered plagiarism, or this looks like a little, uh...
All right, that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to Student Services. Ms. Chuff, good morning.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So our next Student Services Board of Ed Committee meeting is scheduled for December. This past Monday night, the Middletown Friends of the Burks Norma hosted an inclusion presentation by the New Jersey Coalition of Inclusive Education with very well-attended by the school community. Um, parents, there were actually two students there, all the education members and administrators. Tonight on the agenda, we'll be voting on students being grouped for home instruction, out of district placements, and a settlement. Any other questions?
Just a comment. Um, I attended the inclusion and I thought it was extremely interesting and positive. And, um, are, are we going to invite Fred? Are we going to put that application in, or he can come and help us with inclusion?
So when, uh, what Mrs. Neuwes is referring to, if you were there on Monday night, Fred wasn't known from the New Jersey Coalition of Inclusive Ed, is working with the state of New Jersey, and some districts will be given, uh, technical assistance at no cost to the district. Any district is open to apply, and as soon as the application becomes available, we definitely agree if Middletown is chosen as one of the districts to, you know, take as much of the technical assistance to help our students as we possibly want. So that sounds like kind of be a great collaboration between the DOE and the inclusion sessions.
And at our meeting in December, will we be discussing how we're going to, um, work on inclusion?
Absolutely, definitely.
I had asked that you could, I don't know if it's possible or not, but if Fred could join us at one of the, um, strategic planning meetings or forums in the future to discuss, because I think that would be interesting as well. Um, I know Mrs. Roddick wants to speak too.
Yeah, I did. So I also attended, um, the program that was put on by the TFI LLC on Monday night, and thank you actually for bringing Mr. Buglio here. I got a chance to talk to him actually at the school boards conference. It was the first time that I met him. I was very impressed, and then was even more impressed, uh, with his presentation on Monday night. I think, you know, a lot of the feedback that I heard was very positive, um, and really very more about what a true inclusive education really means, especially for a district. Um, I think the other thing that really impressed upon me was what an opportunity we have right now going through the strategic planning process to think about some of our goals, um, to actually improve our percentage in terms of how many children we're actually including, um, in our general education, which as we saw from Monday night, the numbers are kind of slipping. So I think that's really a good point for all of us, um, especially as we head into the third forum, to think about what else we want to see Middletown do. Um, and I also agree with Mrs. Rogers, there's a way to bring him to one of our future Student Services meetings. I know I would welcome it greatly because he is just a wealth of knowledge. He's really great.
I've heard nothing but great things. I wasn't able to make the meeting, and I've heard so much positive feedback from the, the public, and it's really inspiring to me, and, um, you know, I look forward to the future of the street.
Excellent. All right, so I'll definitely reach out. All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Curriculum and Instruction.
So real time, Mr. DeFranco, um, with regard to your question about the Google Originality Reports, um, there is information in student handbooks that is a level regarding plagiarism. Um, but Mrs. Morales and Mrs. Van Gland are going to be collaborating with Mr. Ziviac with some guidelines for the teachers, a rolling out this pilot with the Google Originality Reports. So we have all the time.
Much appreciated.
So getting on to Curriculum and Instruction, um, Mrs. Morales is here. If you are following us on Twitter, you saw that we had a wonderful opportunity for a shared, almost like a shared service between the Board of Ed and the, um, Middletown Township Historic Preservation Commission, the Society, and the Township Committee. So we should give a little update on that initially.
Thank you. Yes, I am fortunate enough now to oversee Social Studies Curriculum, which is my heart. Um, I taught Social Studies here in the district for 15 years. Um, and I was able to work with Tom Valenti of the Historical Society, and Linda Mareska, and Elaine Hankley, who was actually a teacher of Port Monmouth for 29 years of the commission, as well as Mrs. Snell from the Township Committee, to develop this partnership with the goal of bringing more Middletown history into our classrooms. Uh, we specifically targeted middle school for this particular kind of part one because of the fact that we could basically choose a small group of teachers and hit every student in the district. So it's, there's about 14, um, 7th grade social studies teachers, including special education teachers, and they cover the Revolutionary War and colonial era, which is kind of what we're famous for here in Middletown. So we figured we'd start there. So the first thing you see in front of you, we developed an essay contest, which we know kids don't always get super excited about essay contests, so we knew we had to do more than that. So we developed the contest, and then we also created a cohort of the 7th grade teachers who received professional development yesterday, full day, on a guided tour of Middletown, and the police, uh, department was nice enough to lend us their bus for the day. We had Officer Anthony as our driver, and we had Linda and Elaine from the commission narrate the tour, which is also attached in your packet. And being a resident of this town, um, for 15 years, I didn't know half of what they told us yesterday. And I've been on similar tours like this, but most of the teachers on the tour are not Middletown residents, so now they're super excited to bring this back into their classrooms. We're also working with the public library, who's already loaned us their Middletown history collections, and the teachers were looking through a lot of those resources yesterday. Most of those resources aren't even available online, so the students will have to be looking at the old documents and everything, which is what we want them to really be historians. So next steps are, um, we're going to continue the professional development during our professional learning days, and we hope to expand this into the K5 curriculum, which we're currently rewriting, uh, with a committee. And we also were lucky enough to connect with the Monmouth County Historical Association at the Taylor Butler Mansion. If you've ever been there, it's gorgeous. First time when we were ever allowed inside, we got the V I P treatment. They unlocked things for us. Um, they're actually willing to loan us the space for some kind of student celebration or showcase. Um, so they never opened the space, so it's pretty special. So we can start brainstorming ways that we can utilize that space to have our students maybe showcase work, or future contests we're thinking that might appeal to different types of learners, like a photo essay contest or video contest, and really get kids excited about the history of this town. So we're excited about where this is going, and I would love feedback from you if you have any suggestions for me about how I can continue to bring this into our classrooms. Any questions or comments at this time? All right, we'll reach out if you have any, anything for me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So we have a update, um, as we requested, uh, after we last spoke about the Early College Academy Agreement with Brookdale. Um, Dr. George and, uh, Mrs. Caruso and Miss Nipless and I have participated over the last several weeks in about four different meetings, um, with, uh, various, uh, leadership at Brookdale. And, uh, as of last week, we have a final, um, agreement or understanding of how we're going to move forward with Brookdale in implementing this program. Um, it's similar to how they're addressing this countywide, um, amongst other partner districts. So, um, what we have determined is that the current freshman class, who were initially precluded from enlisting in the Early College Academy last spring before this year, um, because there was a hiatus, almost as you would, you would say, um, in where, understanding where the program is going, they will have the opportunity to enlist in the Associate of Arts Program, that track and that track only. Um, next year is sophomores, so we will be getting that information out to our current freshmen and letting them know that they do have that opportunity, um, if they're interested or some applying, to, um, apply for the Associates of Arts Program. There are some conditions. I'll get to them at the end. Um, the next year's freshmen, so current eighth graders, they will have the opportunity to enlist in either, as a freshman, the Associate of Art or the Associate of Science tracks. Um, both, the class of 2023, the current freshman, and next year's freshman class, which will be the class of 2024, uh, will need to register a minimum of 15 students in, um, each of the tracks for, for Brookdale, um, to be able to run the program. That actually is a modification from our original agreement that required 25 students district-wide, um, that we had to register. We've never hit that mark, and that's part of a little bit the, the issue in sustaining this program and running it. Um, so they are bringing down the expectation, but we will have to register 15 students. Um, it can be a total of 15 students between the freshmen and sophomores next year for the Associates of Art Track, but it will be a minimum of 15 students for freshmen choosing to enroll in the Associate of Science Track. Um, that will be then the last class that will be eligible to enroll in the Early College Academy, um, next year's freshmen. They will see through the agreement, uh, for the four years of their high school career. Um, but beginning in the 2020, 21, 22 school year, the Brookdale is at pace right now in launching, uh, countywide their middle college academy. Um, it is a variation of the Early College Academy. They are still working out what that will look like on their end. We had a countywide meeting. Dr. George and I met with the Executive, uh, County Superintendent, the President of Brookdale, uh, various, I guess they were deans and vice presidents, as well as, um, the other superintendents and curriculum assistant superintendents from the Monmouth County Districts to discuss what that transition could potentially look like and what that, what that program will potentially entail, because they are still fleshing that out. Um, we are hopeful that they will have information for us as we approach that school year. Um, but it is two years away. Uh, Dr. Wilson, who, from Brookdale, who is the administrator of their, um, programs, their articulation programs with the high school districts, will be attending our December 4th, um, middle school pathway and academy fair for parents and students. This is a plug, December 4th, um, here at High School North, right, Mrs. Caruso, um, at 6:30. You know, every year, for the last three years, we've been hosting an academy and pathway fair for middle school parents and students. Um, this year will be on December 4th, again, just reiterating, High School North at 6:30. Dr. Wilson will be attending, um, to, uh, further articulate this information with our parents and also talk about, um, how this is a potential opportunity for, again, next year's freshmen as well as current freshmen. So what we're going to do is also let the current freshmen know, um, do a, a phone blast, uh, or also some messaging through Navions, if they're a current freshman, they're interested in entering into the Associates of Arts Track next year or sophomores, they should also attend, um, the information session with Dr. Wilson on December 4th. So that is our update of the Early.
So it's the Early College Academy will end because Brookdale will be in here, I think. The next two years will be able to do it, but then after that, it's one year, and, and for some of the lot of kids, we're doing. And for some, a lot of kids, we're doing it anyway.
We were not meeting our obligation, our original.
It's middle academy or medium college academy, that's not the same.
It will be, it will have, I've been told, again, they're still fleshing it out. I've been told it will have different parameters. The target audience at that point is juniors and seniors who are typically, their plans are a little bit more solid in their minds as to in terms of where they're going. And we're also, Dr. Wilson and I had a very long conversation about looking to expand opportunities to students who maybe traditionally aren't looking for a traditional four-year experience, you know, after high school, how to capture that population of students that we may be better served with an agreement with Brookdale. So we started those conversations as well. And then Dr. George is following up with Dr. Stoudt on that conversation.
Do we have any idea why you didn't take off here?
Well, for various reasons. As we said from the very beginning, it's a very rigorous program. It is. It does require an intense amount of coursework, starting your freshman year. It is not for every student. We made that clear, you know, Brookdale made it clear to us that we should make sure every student understands that. I do think we've lost some students along the way because it was very difficult for them to balance the academic demands. You're basically doing four years, in four years, you're doing four years of high school work plus two years of college in four years, starting as a 14-year-old. So that's a rigorous path for an 18-year-old, you know, entering, you know, college, let alone a 14-year-old at high school. So it's not for every student. We tend to be running right now, believe it or not, about average compared to other districts to have students who are participating. But because we have two tracks and we're unique in that, it does then further divide the number of students interested, you know, because now you've kind of separated them into two different tracks they have to sustain enrollment in. But we did that because we wanted to meet the needs of all our learners and present them with the best opportunities. Because of the academic demands, there's also, it becomes restrictive on what you can do in terms of your extracurriculars. And students have found that to be something that they wanted to have a better balanced life.
But I want to say these two tracks as it relates to Brookdale, but there's many colleges that we have agreements with. We have a significant number of our high school students participating in that. So two tracks split very quickly to other universities, other opportunities. And in our conversations with Dr. Wilson about the middle college academy, we're very excited that it's going to give our students the opportunity to personalize exactly how many credits and in what areas. And I think that's really going to be, you know, a major middle ground. Not to use it wrong because it's a college academy, but really what it is, it's a middle ground for them. And but remember, we have these agreements with a lot of different universities, as I was just talking to, and we also have the whole AP track. And I was talking to some of our AP, our students who are recognized tonight for their AP success and that, you know, one lady was telling me about how she's taken a significant number of classes with Seton Hall University and that she thinks that's the university she's going to go into.
That's my next question, no, but that's, I want to know the other schools that we have this agreement like versus Brookdale. How many kids registered for Brookdale versus like how many kids registered for these other schools?
So I just want to distinguish between the early college academy, I want to clarify, which is unique, that's a four-year commitment, beginning in your freshman year, that you complete 60 college credits. Versus our dual enrollment coursework that you can almost like à la carte, select the courses you want to earn college credit towards. We have agreements with Brookdale for dual enrollment as well, not just early college academy. So like our, actually the agreement for those four courses is on tonight. They just sent it to us, you know, to renew for this year. So like Brookdale, we have the four courses we partner with at Seton Hall. We have multiple courses that we partner with Fairleigh Dickinson, Georgia Core, Rider, you know, they're, we have many students who enlist and enroll in those dual enrollment courses in both our high schools.
Do we have any tracking if the kids go to college there afterwards, that take the courses there?
We have not. Where they're, we have not, to your point, we have not charted out, you know, where the dual enrollment students, particularly where they go to college after graduating.
I wonder if they're taking those courses in those colleges, where they go to those colleges.
Um, I would say based on just my general knowledge, I'll slap my head where, you know, I would say that that's a definite reason. I think it can be a reason for some students, but I think what students are looking for is the transferability of the credits, whether they be from Seton Hall or Brookdale or Fairleigh Dickinson, to transfer to whatever college they pursue in enrollment. Because New Jersey College credits, even Brookdale, transfer very well.
Certain ones.
Yes. Well, again, it all depends on what track you're, and what major you're taking.
Right. The country was guiding you to do the right courses, like transfer.
I'm just, I can't understand why this failed.
I wouldn't say it was a failure. And remember, this is a countywide issue, not just a Middletown issue with sustaining. It's rigorous.
Yeah, it's definitely.
Again, it's only going to probably retain to a very small percentage of students, even in the county. It's hard for them to sustain with the enrollment as it is. Okay, so the professional development is on the agenda for approval. And again, we just discussed the dual enrollment agreement with Brookdale for the four courses that we offer as a dual enrollment college credit are on the agenda tonight. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities finance?
We have a few items to report, but our committee has never been meeting in early December, so we'll be, the topics for that agenda will be more detailed. But just to give the board an update for now, some things. It seems like we talk about this every month, the unending saga of this challenged course for care at High School South, which has been very frustrating for us. As I mentioned in the last meeting, we had, we were in the process of trying to negotiate a contract with a vendor. We had done the two bids, we didn't get anything with the bids. And, you know, a big reason for that is the fact that there are very few actually in it. But one vendor who is actually has all qualifications can save the waters to do the score because of some recent changes. But in any case, we were soliciting proposals to negotiate a contract after doing the two bids. The deadline for that was November 14th, which was last Thursday. We didn't obviously do that. We actually got, we got some response back from the one company that, you know, is qualified to do the work, but essentially what their email to us said was that they would be interested in doing work for us, but they not on the specifications that we had sent out. They, they would not be looking to repair the person we have. But, you know, from what I'm getting from the email, they essentially just want to build a new one that doesn't necessarily look like what we have, but it would be of a similar purpose. So that's the point right now. So we will have to investigate whether that would be something that could be renewable to the curriculum and fit to the curriculum that we have. And, you know, if that would be the case, then we would likely issue a bid with different specifications and see who would bid on that, see if we made progress there. Besides that, I don't have anything else to report. You know, I don't know if there's any other deal actors at this point. I'll be able to speak to some of the panelists too. But I don't think there are, but we can make sure there's not. Considering we haven't anybody even interested in doing what we expect to have, I don't know how the board is going to go with that. So we are continuing to look for a solution to this. So we keep the word. The other item that's on the agenda for facilities is we have been in the process, we actually just started working on updating our long-range facilities plan that we had done, just to refresh you with memory, we had done basically the budget portion of it back in 2016. So we had taken these building and budgeted it out, the idols that, you know, the capital items that we were identifying in the buildings we'd been needing over the next five years. But we hadn't done the actual long-range facilities plan encompasses more than the budget. There's information on, you know, building capacities and enrollment and other narratives about the buildings, which we didn't update because at the time, the state was not accepting these plans in their database. And they were reworking the database and they were telling everybody to halt. So we never did that part. So then we had received, we had heard from the state that they were going to reopen this database. And actually, now that the state is requiring everybody to update their plans if they wanted to do a new project that isn't, that wasn't the old one. So we then discussed, you know, back in the facilities meeting in August, that we were going to be, you know, looking to have Spiesel, who's been an architect for the last few years, and has done the original budget update, to update that and then to, you know, update the rest of the plan. So the resolution that's on the agenda for tonight, the plan is not that we just started doing that process and so we're not near completion. But in order to, for them to eventually submit the completed plan into the database, the board has to pass a resolution. So we put the resolution out tonight, not ready to submit, but when we are ready to submit, then we will be able to submit. And then we do get to drive the information back on this plan. That will be something that will be reviewed in detail with the facilities committee. So that would be in that set. So I just wanted to address something on that item. Under finance, we have a couple of things. We have our financial reports for non-public activity for the work secretary. We have some bus evacuation drills that we do a couple of times a year. So these are the first ones and they require to be approved. And we have the, we want transportation after we had to put out a bid to burgers for a hamster replacement. So those are three items on the finance agenda. So.
I have a question, it's something that's not on here, being that it's workshop. I would like to, being that we're working on the budget, I would like to look into the transportation. I know we're told that we can't, we have all these empty buses running, a lot of seats on the buses empty because we have to hold them for kids that have parking passes and things like that. I would like to look into why we still have to continue to pay for empty seats. Why can't we save money that way? I don't, you know, I've never seen the verbiage that says that we can't let them sign off and save money on transportation. I mean, the state's cutting our funds. We're desperate to find money, did not cut things. And it just seems logical that if the kids aren't taking the buses, why should we pay for it?
There is, you know, I don't remember how the news that came out, but there is a provision that does allow districts to have legal access to something. I don't know in the area, you know, in our immediate area, I don't know anyone who's actually doing that because of the fact that, you know, they're not enforceable. For example, we've talked about this a lot, you know, if somebody signed a waiver and their circumstances changed, then they needed to bussing. You then would be required to put the student on the bus. My student wouldn't be able to get to school and that could be happening mid-year. I mean, there's also circumstances that change every day. Honestly, you know, the flip side is if you were a parent, why would you sign away, you know, your ability for your students to ride the bus, you know, unless you were going to be, you would get something for that. And even then, you know, it would likely not be enforceable if you had circumstances. For example, if your student has their own car and you drive to school, what happens if the car breaks down, the parent can't drive them to school, they've got to get on the bus. So we do, we do structure the routes so that we assign more students to the buses, particularly at the high school level, than seats. The buses have 54 seats. We typically assign more than 54 students to those buses because we know that there are students that on any given day won't ride. And sometimes it's seasonal. Sometimes they have athletics for a season and they're not riding the bus, but then they're back on the bus. You know, sometimes they're working, they drive, they don't drive. You know, so students, you know, there are some students who just drive every day and that's it. But there's students who also fluctuate maybe sometimes and not every day. So it's definitely something that we've discussed, but it sounded like a good thing when they, you know, when it was originally approved to do that, but, you know, to execute it and actually realize the benefits from it. You know, districts really, you know, I don't know what districts that are doing and conceiving, but we do always try to take that into account, you know, that not everybody's going to ride the bus.
Whose role, whose role was that? Like, we were always told that there was.
Well, we're required by law to provide transportation to our school for students who are eligible. That's, that's the, that's the code.
And I mean, if you, you know, in my experience, from my experience as seniors, if their car broke down, they could get back on that bus. They drove with friends or they, they got, I drove them, whatever, but they were not getting back on that bus and that was their choice. And you kind of hear, you listen to the kids talk today and that's kind of their opinion. I get the kids that are in sports and eat buses, you know, only sometimes. I wouldn't take them off. But I'm talking about the kids that drive to school every day. We give them a parking pass and there's a lot of them. I mean, look, there's a couple hundred kids at the high school that drive.
That's why, that's why we assign more than 54 students to each bus. You know, we do push the loads up beyond that, you know.
There's no way to look into that further and find a way.
Like, you know, little town, you could say, you could, that.
Yeah, that's.
I don't see why not. I mean, it's not a lot of money. I'm saying.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money.
They're without work control. Maybe we should look.
I agree, we should look into it because if a student has a parking pass, then they shouldn't need a bus pass. Right.
Yeah, so to disagree with that, I don't know about your policy. You know, the margin for, for what Mrs. Gallagher had stated, you know, even going back to the days where I drove to high school and my car broke down sometimes, I had to get on the bus because of my homework. You know, you try to get along with your friends, be balanced, able to get along with your friends. If you are, you know, if you are driving to school, it's a privilege. It's a good privilege to have, but I don't see us being able to save a substantial amount of money to measure with the work it would take, Mrs. Gallagher and her staff to look into, with the time it would take, away from them doing other things to investigate this. It's really very problematic and costly. To me, this just feels like the sort of thing that will cost us more to look into and we actually realize what's there, especially if we're here right now, that there are already overloaded buses of a capacity structure. I know it's, you know, we're talking about, how many bus routes are in South, for example?
I don't know. I don't think there's, there's a lot.
Right, so imagine there's like four spaces out right on right and there's maybe 20 bus routes, so that would be 25, right? So you're talking about a bus, but if they're already overloaded, you're talking about a few empty seats. So what is consolidating those routes going to the south?
Maybe nothing, but that's what people are doing too much of the way to walk. Sorry, you mean if people don't get, they have the same thing to have. So if you're somebody who's owned, you're eligible and you're driving a car, that's why we take, because it's a lot of work. And it's a lot of work, as you say, but maybe you can estimate that. Because certain kids are.
We could come up with a list of who, how many kids have parking passes, but we would have.
Or.
That would.
Somebody more.
Right, that, well, that they actually get the passes, then you have to go and look see what bus routes they're on and whether that would have any impact, you know, I mean, you could.
You're a wall artist.
And is there an estimated cost for students to ride the bus to the U S? Some round number that.
Every, you know, each, well, that's made a little bit, that's, that's what we, that's what the state says that we use for, for non-public schools, that the cost can see more than a thousand dollars per student for a bus. But the cost for students is going to depend on the ground. I mean, we have grounds with all different costs and so that's going to vary.
For me, oh, sorry.
You said, you said earlier that the bus needs to be there because the state says it has to be there each child's time, even the bus ride. So that kind of.
That falls within the state.
That falls into the same rules. The state's saying, you know, you can't take somebody that's west of you.
You can't.
Not required.
You're not required to. It's too mobile, you can have, you can't have.
It's two months and two and a half.
High school. Yeah, right. But your point was that the state says you have to give these students an opportunity to take the bus regardless of if you've got enough because we're required to.
Right, there was, what Mrs. Benmies were referring to, I believe, is, you know, that they didn't issue legislation, I don't remember exactly how many years ago, it was, you know, a few years ago, that said that the districts could get waivers. But again, you know, I don't know. I mean, I know, me as a parent of a high school student. don't know, I mean, I know, me, as a parent of a high school student, I would never sign waiver for the transportation and give up my right to have my daughter ride the bus. I don't know, why would I do that?
To get the pass?
To get a parking pass, yeah. You have to sign a waiver in order to get a parking pass, that would be the deal. I have no idea if this would save us any money at all, I just think it's worth looking at.
I think, again, the amount of money it would save us, it would engender unbelievable amount of thought.
Wouldn't it be worth it?
For exactly the reason that Mrs. Gallagher said, because every parent or child is eligible for busing, and then I would say you have to choose between giving your kid a parking permit, or they can take the bus, it's not both. And then when their car breaks down, or they get into an accident, it's no fault of their own. We were talking about the other night, the, the car with the South drivers was involved in an accident, and, you know, Mr. Patrick had to go out. You know, it could be no fault of their own, and how this student is without transportation and has signed away their rights to ride the bus, and now they're destroyed.
But then they could go to the business office, and there could be an exception for that. It might take a couple of days to implement, but why?
That's, that's the thing, that once we, once we build a route without these students on it, it depends upon how many kids are, you know, in that area, but there may not be room on the bus.
But you also.
If we bid the route and don't include these students, then there may, there may not be room on the bus.
And then where, and where does it end? Do you take away the bus rights for kids who do athletics? Oh, we don't have courtesy bus owner after school for sports.
That's not what we're saying.
But what I'm saying is, that's the next logical step, because what's your next population that doesn't ride the bus, it's the athletes in the afternoon? So why not take away their buses?
That's not what we're saying at all. And the other thing is, if somebody does have an accident or hardship, we give them a bus pass. You said that there's extra, there's a few extra seats on, I know they're rolling their head factories.
Give them an extra, one of the extra bus passes, because we said that there was extra.
Yeah, there's a couple extra seats.
I didn't say extra seats. I said we assign more students than their seats on the buses, so there's not extra seats. There's, if every student that gets assigned to several of these buses rode the bus that day, there would not be enough seats, but we know that they don't all ride. What I'm saying is, there's more students than seats assigned to the buses.
I would say, we do our bus routes and say we get 10 new students in, and they all happen to be high school seniors. We have to provide the buses, so we have to find a seat on those buses for them anyway. What's the chances of how many seniors are going to give up their margins by, you know, hardship?
Yeah, I mean, this is all a hypothetical situation, and it would require, it would be contingent upon people filling out a waiver, we don't know how many people felt a waiver, it's just, you know, gathering data at this point.
And I think at this point, we're telling people that we're losing all this money, and everything's on the table, I think we should look into it. I don't know how much we're going to save, maybe we're not going to save anything, but for me, that's something that's been a public issue for many, many years. I mean, we have people not in the last year or so, has come to us, said these buses are empty, our kids have to walk two miles. I mean, it's just something to look at. If everything's on the table, and we're going to be threatening cutting programs or this and that, we, we should have all our facts covered on how we could try to save some money without affecting the kids. And, and, you know, to me, it's pointless, if there's a hardship case, we have to get them on the bus.
And there's room, we're saying there's empty spots on the bus for emergencies, you know.
Does the board have?
Thank you.
So, so the ones that he asked from the board, and what's the timeline for Mrs. Gallagher?
We can have a committee.
In committee, we can have a question.
We'll do the best we can to have it ready for December 5th.
No, it doesn't seem like you're going to talk about the date. You can't do that.
Yeah, no, let us know, it can be on any of these timelines.
Yeah.
This is something I'm looking for, for budget, because we have a little time.
We have time.
You know, we're looking, but this isn't a strategic planning thing, this is a budget issue on, say, how, how can we save money? So, you know, if we have the answers, why we'll put the budget together, you know, after the first year or whatever.
If I was to, yeah, I want to know what's in it for that. So if I sign with, what am I going to do?
Well, what Mrs. Rogers said, was to tie, was to tie it to a parking pass.
I already have a parking pass.
It happens if you don't get a parking pass.
We have to start going and changing the way, uh, student, and what's more, it's like, you know, it's, it's a right that we give our students and them, that they can ask for, for a parking pass, right? And now, thanks to what happens now, we have a lot of parking spots, right? But, so you're telling me now that you would say you can have, you can only have one? You can either take the bus, or you can have a parking spot, that's it?
I'm saying we should visit that, we should explore that option, we should talk about it.
I just want to know if there's savings, that's what I want to know.
That's it.
And it is.
It's exploratory.
That's it.
So, so we'll continue discussion.
Yeah. All right, we're moving on to policy.
The policies that are on the agenda are second readings of the policies that were on the agenda last month. The update item under policy was, we had talked about last month, we had some discussion about seatbelt requirements for charter buses that are used for school trips, you know, not, not our, our regular, because our regular buses are required to have them, but, and what we had talked about at the last meeting was to go back and talk to our principals and administrators and see, you know, what the feedback was on that and input, and we did do that. We had meetings with principals over the last month where we put that question out, and some of the concerns that they have, well, first of all, they, they have not run into any company that will guarantee that seatbelts are available. I know, Mr. Franco, you mentioned that Code USA, but when our principals called them, they did not tell us that they would guarantee that, you know, they, they said they would try, you know, and they do have buses with seatbelts, but they would not guarantee that for every trip. But some of the things that the principals' concerns were, well, for example, you know, if it's a longer trip, if the students are dropped off and picked up later in the day, might not always be the same bus, so what happens if you have a bus in the morning that has the seatbelts and they all go, and then they send buses in the afternoon, and one doesn't have a seatbelt, have seatbelts, and, you know, you're, and they're far away, and what would happen then if the students were, you know, basically not able to be transported home by that bus? They said, you know, sometime, you know, they'll request seatbelts, but if, if buses arrive at the school, maybe, you know, they look for three buses and two of them have seatbelts and one doesn't, you know, what, what happens then? You know, it, it would, it would basically curtail a lot of the trip activity, it would make it difficult for the principals to, you know, to be able to run these trips. I mean, they, they always, you know, we, we had talked to them last year about it, and they, they do request, and they, and they ask for the seatbelts, and they do get them, but not all the time, you know, and if it had to be an absolute requirement, you know, they do have concerns about their ability to be able to, you know, have the trips go, go on because of the, you know, that situation under Dr. Public into that.
Yeah, I, I do. Just to be clear, this, from a supply and demand standpoint, any additional constraints that we put on really could have a, a, a major impact. Just a conversation today I had with Mr. Rennella and Mrs. Walker about where we're at for indoor track, and even some of our state meets, we don't have buses right now for indoor track, so, and talking today at my Mathosian Educational Services Board meeting, where that's the primary task of what we do, we do more than $45 million a year in transportation, and a lot of school districts are now building in vans because they just, they can't get some of the co-curricular routes, and so anywhere where they have those smaller needs, they're, they're trying to build into their budget vans because the power we're in right now with transportation. So, I, I mean, and it clearly understands why we want to do that, right? We want a seatbelt for every kid. Certainly in our own cars, we have a seatbelt for every kid. We absolutely want to do that. We just want to make sure that we understand the full ramifications of changes like that in, 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 in a market that already has supply and demand issues.
How can we address this within the policy? Can we just put a letter out to parents? We couldn't get a bus today with seatbelts, apologies. You know, do you still want to go on this trip, or do you want to carpool? I mean, you know, I'm just throwing, throwing things out here, is that?
I mean, the logistics of that, I would think would be, you know, I think we kind of talked about this last month, that that would be very difficult, you know, if, if you're faced with notifying parents, you know, at the time that the bus arrives at the school, or the time that the bus arrives at the destination that they need to come home from, and there's no, and there's no seatbelts. Like, doing that in real time, having parents, you know, be able to read that and coming up with a response, you know, in a timely fashion, I would, you know, would be difficult.
I, I, I think that we really have to strongly state that is our expectation, wherever possible, that we have seatbelts, and that's a conversation we've had last year, and we had some success with that, because we are a bigger district, and we transport a significant number of students, we do have a strong position in the marketplace, I just don't think we can handle it.
Is, is it a requirement when our principals or other staff or administrators who run a trip, that when they make the request, are they required to request a bus, the seatbelts?
Yes. That is our expectation, we're very clear with it.
I, I just want to check, is that our expectation, or is there a requirement to do?
No, it's, it's a requirement that they ask. It's not a requirement they do.
And, but, but I, you know, I will say, you know, there are, there are times that, you know, and this is some of the feedback we got too, that they do request the buzzer with a seatbelt, and, you know, there's, there's even times where originally they're told that they're going to get that, and then if something happens last minute, they can't provide that bus, then, you know.
I know, I know, I, I just want to make sure it's clear, you know, there's, there are things that are in our power that we can control, and there are things that we have to respond to, we have to, and so what's in our power is basically to request.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that we are requiring that.
I have, I have a question, please, Mr. Franco. But I, isn't it the board that we have to receive that? Just personally, it was not the board. It's not the board? Okay. I don't know, I don't know. I had a hard, I had a problem, I really, about the seatbelts. I really have a problem, and I understand what you're saying about trips and stuff, but, you know, one child, just one child, because of, because of trips, we don't, I, I, I don't know, we need to vote.
Well, if I may, respectfully, I just mentioned to the chair, the issue is being referred to committee. It's going to be reviewed as soon as December for the preliminary conversation, perhaps after that December meeting. There can be reported on a monthly basis as to the status of, A, I'll bring a copy to statute that specifically says whether seatbelts are or not required. We can look at your, your letters, look at your policies, we can proceed accordingly with that, but you're not going to stop it tonight, it's just a point.
Thank you, Lester. Okay, moving on to student activities.
Okay, I'm just going to do an item that actually isn't on here, but it's on the addendum. It's a research study that's being conducted by a teacher in our district, Deb Horn. She's a doctoral candidate at Rowan, and she's going to be examining influences on teacher grading practices as they relate to student writing at the secondary level. It's going to be interviews with teachers, and looking at student work all anonymous.
That's on the addendum.
That's on the addendum, okay. And Mr. Carroll is going to talk to you about uniforms, you all have the handout, and Mr. Rennella kind of explained how the, the handout works.
Thank you, good evening. So you have the handout, I tried to go through the last three years of every piece of cloth that we bought, not just uniforms, practice jerseys, socks, things like that, so, and then on the last page is the expectations for going forward for the next school year. How that's developed is, we meet with each coach after the season, conditioning uniforms, what we need and things like that, the site manager, and then when I have a chance, I do go and actually look at the uniform myself, so that's kind of where we're at and where we're going. I have questions for them.
This is the whole budget?
For this year? We haven't done the spring yet, but like hats and things like that, but not in there. And some of the things.
We have the spring in for the other year?
Sure.
I see, I see, it's 2017, 2018, 2019, and it's back and forth.
You're looking at like lacrosse, right? Is that something like that? Four years ago, we spent almost $20,000 when we took it over from lacrosse in Middletown, so you'll start to see that come up as we go forward.
And all we spent is $160,000.
For?
In four years. Girls lacrosse. I don't see any.
Or equipment, we spent, uniforms, again, we spent $20,000.
This is just strictly uniforms, so we bought equipment?
Oh, sure, sure, this is just cloth. It's not equipment, no. We bought balls and things like that.
So, so is that Bay Shore, three years, only sheerly uniforms, that they're, uniforms in that great shape, so I'm just looking at, just trying to look across, see where I can finish spaces.
What was the question?
They're Bay Shore.
Bay Shore.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it looks like it's been a big year in 2016.
Well, when I got here seven years ago, the middle schools were about 10 years behind uniforms, so the first couple of years that I got here, we replaced everything, so we're on the schedule to replace those things now.
So how old are they in general, say?
I think, I think some of them. Five, some of them, yeah, but most of them haven't replaced it within the last four or five years.
Okay.
And again, now, I've been here long enough, we're going to recycle those now.
Wrestling is not on here at all, except for next year, high school South has.
Has singlets, yes, they request the singlets.
How, okay, how often do we replace this stuff? As far as.
Well, you're asking, is it?
How often?
It, it depends on sport. It's not a, I know in the past, they've had like a three year cycle.
They used to have a program, right?
And that's really, it's not really, I don't find it cost effective to the district. I find it effective to see what we have, and on a need basis, we do that.
But the wrestling team.
North Wrestling, they decided to buy their own at one point.
Yeah, they're fundraising, they're putting out there, they said there was a whole big thing out there.
For, for singlets?
Yeah, that we weren't funding it.
Again, that, that's the coach and the athletic managers tell me what we need based on that, so.
Is it mats or singlets, are you talking about? Last week you talked, spoke about mats, or last week?
The mats, the mats.
Mats, okay. Uh, Middletown North will get a mat either later in December or the beginning of January, so I don't know where that misinformation got out that I was not getting the mats.
Right, I'm not saying.
No, I'm just saying.
It looks terrible.
It looks terrible.
Things that we're not funding.
Right.
This is a thing that we.
And there's fundraisers out there, that used to be every kid brought in 10 letters or 10 envelopes, just in letters to grandpa and grandpa, you remember Mr. Franco?
Right.
And now it's called Snap Raise, we get 10 emails, and we try to word that in a way that doesn't make the district look bad, because it doesn't make like, you know, looks that we're not doing our job. So, but it's effective to say, send an email to grandma, you know, send them $50 because we don't have uniforms or equipment, things like that, and it does, and I'm trying to, we are all working and curbing that, the way it's worded.
Would we see the athletic budget by the board, are you even including there, or is that outside? I don't know, if we see like X, Y, Z, it takes $3,000.
You get a $8,000, you get a general uniform line item. It's part of that. Oy.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to shared services, our next shared services meeting is December 9th at 7:00 P.M. Did you have anything to say, Mr. DeFranco?
Not looking forward to actually having the shared services meeting.
Yes.
Just to generally note to the board, if there are any topics that you want us to raise with the township, when we need the shared services, just email them either to myself or Mrs. Rogers, just to make sure we get that in general.
I think it's actually at 6:30 P.M., generally.
I think the turf field.
I'm sorry, 6:30, no, I'm.
I think the turf field is three.
I was going to say, yeah, I can address the turf field.
They're doing it, they're not doing it, this prospect, or whatever out there.
Um, so I, yeah, I have something from the deputy mayor. Turf field at Normandy is part of a 10-year recreational plan. The 10-year recreational plan is when a town can spend $8 million over 10 years, or $4 million at once. Middletown is doing the latter. 10% of the money will come from a grant, so it'll only cost Middletown $3.6 million for the nine total fields in the project. There was some misinformation on social media about that.
We, I have gotten some questions from members of the public about why the township is making another investment for fields in that town, effectively on that side of town, where they're applying to land. On the north side of town, they don't have any turf fields that they would like to see developed, or lose, or something, so I know we've had a couple discussions.
You can put that on the agenda. That could be one of those. And if anybody else, yeah, like Nick said, if you have anything else to put on the agenda, please let us know. All right, moving on to strategic planning. Our next meeting is Form 3. It's December 11th at High School North, am I right? High School North. So we just encourage members of the public to come join us, Form 3. And.
Can we, can we talk about that as board members? Can we talk about the strategic plan?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm sure they'll hear me. I have some concerns on how the last strategic planning meeting went. When people were leaving, I was standing in the middle of the room, and there was a lot of disappointment. I think that my, my personal perspective is that we need to have a few more meetings. And we need to really listen to the public. I think that we're losing the trust because of all the rumors that are out there. And I think we need to put it back into perspective. And we need to regroup and prove to the public that there is no plan, and that we are listening to them. But I truly think we need more time to listen to them. I think, I understood the process, although I was confused about the process, but I understand what they were trying to do. I also understand that the public now wanted to have a conversation. They wanted to discuss what took place in Form 1 and Form 2, so that conclusions could be made somewhere down the line. But I think then all the rumors started hitting the fan, and I think that we're losing the trust of the public, and I think we need to gain it back. And we need to do something, and I think we need to put a little more time into it to do it.
I agree, and, you know, I'm so glad we have Schoolhouse Strategies on board with us, because they are able to adapt to the process going forward to what the public wants and what they heard in the first few forums. And I'm sure we'll be discussing that with them going forward. But it's very important to understand that this Board of Education is very involved in this process. And we are, you know, early in the morning before we go to work, we're reading those comments from the public. At night, we get home until 11 o'clock at night, we're reading the comments from the public. We're taking this very seriously. And any, any plan that will be discussed by anyone before the process is over stands to diminish the integrity of this process, and it's unacceptable. We all need to stay true to the process and see this through to the end.
So one, one suggestion, so I, I have a similar feeling to Mrs. Minnies from the second session. I think that, yeah, I, I do have, I have faith in Schoolhouse Strategies. I think they know what they're doing. I think they underestimated Middletown a little bit, a little bit. I think that they need to put what they're doing and put the activities of our sessions in context of the waiver picture. You know, there was a gentleman who spoke at the second session, effectively saying, what's the point of doing mission statement? Doesn't this hold steady, and why do you change this every five years? And what that said to me was that this person doesn't really understand what a strategic plan is and why you do it every five years. There's no context to the activity. And I think it's important, if you're gonna get buy-in from the public, that they understand that, you know, the reasoning behind this, to say, look, this is, you know, session two is the squishy meeting, where we're talking about, you know, beliefs, mission statements. So it's gonna.
Did you say squishy?
It's squishy. It's gonna feel weird, but when we're done, it provides the guidelines to the rest of the conversation. Because every conversation you have after that, you can say, well, we said that we believe in X. Does this support our belief in X? And, you know, the rumors aside, Middletown's always gonna be a ridiculous rumor mill. It just is what it is. I think that, I think that we've done a good job as a board of trying to jump on top of that and respond. I know that my email inbox is, is pretty busy. And, you know, I, I think that's always gonna happen, and there are always gonna be people who want to start rumors to undermine the process. I agree that we have to believe in the process, we have to support it. But we need to see that back through our strategies. They need to put us in the best position possible to help manage the process, to make sure that our constituents understand what we're doing. Because this is a very educated, you know, smart, involved community. And, you know, we don't want to lose them, as Joe said.
Which is fantastic. It's amazing. 2,700 people filled out these surveys. There were, there are 10,000 comments that we're reading through, and the comments are so helpful. I, I can't, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate your involvement in this process for those of you who have come to the forums, and those who have not, please come to Form 3. Yeah, I'm gonna relay all of this information to Schoolhouse Strategies. We'll talk about it with the committee, we'll bring it to the full board, and then we'll bring it to the community. And we'll do a better job of explaining what Form 3 is going to look like to the community. I'm not certain where we, where we made a little bit of mistake with that. I'm sure members of the public will tell me in a little bit. But, you know, we want people to know exactly what they're walking into Form 3 and to be prepared. So that's a great point, I think. And any constructive criticism is always welcome, of course.
And I also think that we need to have more faith in our public. Because I know the comment was made that maybe the discussions weren't going right because administration wasn't at the tables. I think that the conversation went astray because of a lack of direction. I think the community truly appreciated the conversations not being led, that this is their strategic plan, and this is their opportunity to talk. And I truly believe that our community is smart enough to have those conversations without it being led.
It was important for me to show that we were not leading it, and that the administrators were not leading the conversation, and that it is all coming from the public. And I love talking to Lynne Strickland, because she talks about that, how these ideas come from the public, and then we take them, and we throw them on the board, you know, Form 3, and then we ask the community, what do you see that stands out as a top priority? And I, I love this process. I really believe in it, and I'm excited about it. My personal friends loved it. They loved Form 2. They, they, they loved delving into it and seeing what they can do to help improve the district. They're excited about Form 3. So I think that, you know, we can't focus on the negative. We need to focus on the positive here, because there are 20,000 moms and dads in this community who send their kids to public schools, and, you know, I, I would think that the majority are happy about the process.
And I also think the other thing that was positive is that you made the statement that if you live in Middletown, you can sit at the tables. If you don't.
They're residents, pay taxes.
This is a strategic plan for Middletown, and it shouldn't be decided by people that don't live and pay taxes here. So even though we value them as educators or whatever they do in the district, this is a Middletown issue for the, for the taxpayers and the board, and, you know, our people to work on. And it's their opinions that should count the most.
It's a great point.
That was a good idea.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to.
The timing for, so the second session, I think, honestly, I think people got, maybe they wanted to jump into priority part of it, where they're talking about mission statements and beliefs and a lot of stuff, where they want to lay the groundwork, that's gonna be done to that. For the second, the agenda script, the timing for that, I guess, when should folks, when do we get, you know, when folks should expect to see that?
We're looking at early next week. But, you know, like I said, the, Schoolhouse Strategies really needs to digest all this new information, right? We have a lot more data than was perhaps expected. And we need to adapt to this whole rumor mill that started, and they're, they're getting the emails, they're seeing, so they have to adjust to that. But I believe the original intention was early next week. And if that takes a little longer, then so be it. You know, we have to trust the process and go from there, you know? I'll keep you informed. And then, yeah, like I said, it has to go committee, board, public, like that. Okay, so now I'd like to open to the public.
Can I just ask a, sorry, a question? Just going back to the policy, just for a second. I'm just a little confused myself, so I understand what we're doing later in the agenda.
Okay.
In reviewing the packet of all the different policies, I appreciate the discussion we had, and the update about the charter bus with the seatbelt requirements, and whether or not to include that in the policy. Transportation, student transportation is in the packet. Is that on the agenda to be going on tonight? So is that something you have to take out if the policy changes now, or through review? Whether or not to mention that, from my.
The conversation about the seatbelts was prompted by the fact that we had a transportation policy on the agenda, but the changes didn't have to do with that. We can go ahead and approve the changes that were.
That's in here.
That's in there.
Okay.
And then, at a, at a later date, if the board decides they want to make some change, additional changes, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
The ones that were in here were recommended because of statute or changes and things. So this would be something, the seatbelt issue would be something generated by the board. That could be done at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the microphone to the public on agenda items only, please. Okay, saying nobody come to the microphone. I need a motion to approve minutes.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve 11. B?
So moved.
Second.
I was gonna go, okay, motion to approve B? Do you have a second?
So moved.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Report to the superintendent.
Action items? No action items. One, two, four, four is the.
The addendum? Okay, so I need a motion to approve items 1, 2, and 4?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed on number 1.
Abstentions. Superintendent updates?
I don't know what it is.
Okay.
We haven't had one in a while, in public.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion to approve, let's see, I'll start now, C... I'm sorry, 12B?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve C1.
Wait a second. Two, three.
As an underaction. So again, I need to, I need a motion to approve this facilities, C1. I can read it out there. Be resolved by the Middletown Township Public School District Board of Education to approve the amendment of the 2009 Long Range Facility Plan to address the five-year reporting requirements and to be consistent with proposed school facilities projects. Further, the board authorizes Spesial Architectural Group Incorporated to make the submissions to the Department of Education on behalf of the district.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to, I need a motion to approve D1A through K.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
I want to abstain on the transportation ones, because I've got it not clear.
Okay. I need a motion to approve E1? I'm sorry, where does this end? E1 through 3?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve S1 and 2?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve. Yes, go ahead.
Did you just say E1, did you do 2 and 3, or did we just do E1?
We did 1, 2, and 3.
E1, 2, 3.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize.
So I need a motion to approve G1?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Is that everything? Ah, I need a motion to approve personnel. Aye. Sorry, so that is. 1 through 13?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Okay, Mr. DeFranco? On personnel items 1 through 13? Mrs. Camenini?
Yes.
Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Minnies?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers? Yes.
Do we have to do the amendment?
We didn't.
We did that. Superintendent. Okay, moving on to old business. Okay, if nobody has any old business, we'll move on to new business.
First, I'd like to thank Chrissy Perez for the Holiday Express yesterday at High School South. In my 19 years on the board, I've never seen a more incredible program. The kids, the staff, everybody there was just so happy and had such a good time, that it was really impressive. And I know that she says somebody, a parent gave her the info, and I'd like to thank that parent, but I'd really like to thank Mrs. Perez for working with that and making it happen. And from the sounds of it, it's gonna be a yearly event, because they said they were coming back next year. And just the looks on the kids' faces and the dancing and everything, Jersey Mike's for giving the food, and Holiday Express for all the gifts for the kids. I mean, it was just so touching. You could not be in that room and not be happy. So that's the kind of things.
That Tim McClellan's band, it was a huge band, just donating their time. And to walk into that room, it was so awe-inspiring. I couldn't believe how many people were there. I was just so blown away, and I, you know, I made sure to tell everybody I could find that. It was just so impressive. I'm so glad they're doing it every year now. I think that'd be great.
And we need more of those things for all students, all, all levels, because that's what brings people together. That's the one thing we miss in this district, is our community event, where the whole community gets together. Yesterday was just a perfect example of a successful event. Also, we mentioned before the inclusion program. I was very impressed. I'm glad that we finally got to have one. I thank both sides for working together and bringing it to us. And I'm really looking forward to hearing how we are going to improve our inclusive rates for all students. I attended a PTA meeting at Thorn, and on December 11th, they're going to have Reeds Across America. I don't know if anybody was here a few years ago when they did that. Thorn is getting the privilege of having it done a second time. It's a whole parade of bands that come with, over a million bands. They go all over the country and deliver vans to veterans and Reeds to veterans. And they come to Thorn, and they'll have veterans there, and they'll have Honor Corporal Thorn, which is Thorn's legacy. And it's really a nice thing, so if anybody has time to go, it's going to be held from 8:30 to 11:30 December 11th. Really a touching event, and it's a privilege for our district to have them come to one of our schools. So if you can make it there. And I understand too, I think they said that they were gonna try to do a district-wide fundraiser, or maybe if they could get everybody to donate a dollar, they can make a contribution to Reeds Across America. And, um, Thorn has done it in the past and they raised, I think, six thousand dollars, so they're looking to make it, um, maybe district-wide. I guess we'll get information as it comes out. That was a good thing. Um... Also, for our curriculum meeting on Monday, could we, um, get the percentage of our staff that are duly certified in regular and specialized? I know Pam touched on that earlier, but might be a good thing to come up at our meeting.
And Mrs. Pecos, can we add that to the agenda for Monday? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, 'cause I think that would help. Um... Also, we got an email today about the calendar committee. It's gonna be held on December fifth. I'm asking that we move that because last year, there were concerns from parents that, um, there was one representative, and I think she came from PIC, but it was never discussed at PIC about the calendar. I would like to see us, and the PIC meeting is December ten. I would really like to see whoever our liaison is, reach out to PIC, get information from the PTA presidents to go back to their schools and come back with any concerns about the calendar. Because this way, everybody's included, not somebody that, you know, um, is representing the whole community but doesn't really know how the whole community feels. You know, at least you'll have a majority opinion of where people want to go when they make a decision on behalf of the community.
And I hope it's a good idea. I support that.
I also would like to see, when we go into those meetings, there's always a calendar prepared you have to look at and you can work on. I'd like to see the board get a copy of that so that we can have a discussion ourselves so that we're, as we go in as representatives, we're on the same page, that I'm not making a decision for nine members of the board.
Yeah, um, so first of all, we, we, December every year, um, we do have the PIC president on there. We also have a second parent on there. I think that's a good idea. That's a great suggestion. We certainly can look to see if we can move it, uh, to, uh, after the, the PIC meeting so we can get some, uh, some, and actually make sure it's an agenda topic. I'll reach out to, uh, to Margie about that and, uh, make sure that we do that. But the, the reason it's in the timeframe of December is so that what a lot of people have heard from parents is that they wouldn't, um, have enough time to make plans as to when it is. We already have a couple different versions of the calendar. I think it's three, three potential versions of the calendar just as a starting point. So I, I'll put that, uh, in the, uh, Friday update to the board so that they have that as well.
I just don't see why a couple of weeks till I have, till January, it's gonna make a difference. You know, that we take our time, we get ready for some PIC, we bring it back, we get, then we get board opinion on, before we go into that meeting and we have the calendar meeting in January.
Early January?
Yeah.
So we could do the board, after the board meeting?
And then vote on it.
Early January, December.
It's not gonna make a difference in a couple of weeks.
No, I didn't disagree. I thought I said it was a good idea. I'm good, you know?
That's fine.
Thanks.
Why do you have to make sure it's the same calendar committee? It's the last year.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
I think we had two calendar committees because we crossed over the year end, so I guess you want, you want to make the point that I guess whoever's on the calendar committee now will just go over January, Christmas, everything.
Yeah. We started in December last year, but we finished it.
Yeah, yeah, we remember, remember this conversation, who's on this committee? I think that's usually because you don't know who's gonna be on the...
Well, that would help, but that meeting has helped.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just saying, I think there are multiple calendars.
Makes up a foodie.
So I'm just saying, so whoever's on the calendar committee now, I guess, who's that?
You know, I'm...
So you guys will be on it, like, so...
Something good is great.
And I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Thank you. I want to know if we could see the notes from the high school students' forum. That's on the newsletter, the most recent newsletter. Um, it said that there are notes from the forum to add what the kids said, and I was just curious about things like that. I feel like we're not getting enough student input to the strategic planning process, and I just thought that that would be great if we could get those notes, if the board could see those notes. That would be, I think, helpful to us.
It's always good to know what the students are thinking.
Yeah. And I, I had a question from member of the public, uh, that they requested a transfer to one of our undercrated schools and they were declined. And I, I wanted to know, wh- what are the reasons for that? Why, why could a student be, um, denied? Because, um...
Uh, because an undercrated school may seem undercrated when you look at total enrollment, but if they were, say, going to, and, you know, asking to go to the third grade at Port Monmouth, third grade itself is cap. Fourth grade, there's lots of...
Okay.
So it depends on actually, just programs, sometimes our inquest board is full, sometimes the class is full, those would be the things.
Okay.
And they're usually giving those.
If I may, obviously, we didn't identify who the parent or student was that asked the question, but I would just suggest that parent speak with the administration to give a specific answer because that may not necessarily directly answer or address the concern they had. So I just want to be sure that you're giving, you know, excuse another minute.
Yeah, that's fair. Good point.
And I could say that the letter O you specified exactly.
Right. Okay, that's it for me. John?
Yeah, all I want to say is, um, you know, heartfelt, um, greetings for, yeah, I have a family, I'm Michelle. You know, so it hits the Middletown community, farming, um, community in particular, you know, unions or yesterday and today, and those more. Very sad, really great kid. Just wanted to, um, stand, you know, we have one of the signs, but, silence, but, um, instead of heartfelt, you know, some family, very people, um, wishing the best to this person.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Okay. I'm going, it took a little time because I hate to say this, I, I, after what you just said, uh, meanwhile, I want to tell about something good, but, you know. I just want the public to know, uh, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, High School South's play is on and Mr. Co, what's his name? I can't say it in Kazakh, right? Okay. He has written this play and it would be wonderful if the public attends. That's my, as I say every year, and this is my date night, between Friday and Saturday, my husband and I will be at these plays. High School North is doing Our Town. High School South is doing You. That's the name of the play, You. I don't know, but I'm sure it's gonna be a very interesting night to see these plays. So if you're not doing anything, come on out and come to the play.
Anybody else from new business?
Yeah. On that note, uh, this Friday night is Bayou Elementary's Theater Week performance. Um, it's very exciting. And if you remember, I reported on Port Monmouth's Theater Week in the spring. Yes. When they had their performance here at North, uh, I took my son with me and he thought it was one of the greatest things that he ever saw. And I'm happy with the report that he has volunteered to be part of Theater Week this week, so he will actually be in the performance on Friday night. So if you are available and around at seven PM, please come to Bay Shore for their big performance. It's gonna be a lot of fun. For Bay Shore?
We make the toll, don't worry. There's a way of getting around.
Date night?
One last shout out. Please, um, look for the newsletter. Uh, Mr. Rotolo and a lot of members of the administration and school community are working really hard to make sure we have a good newsletter each week, and I know that, uh, Mr. Rotolo's been working hard on it. We've been working hard on it this week. Uh, and, uh, so look for that every Friday, um, because, uh, it really is, is a good update of what's going on in, in the school.
I love the newsletter. Yeah, it's great. Um, okay, now I'd like to open, I'd like to open the mic to public comment.
I said it. No, no, not, not the board update. There's a board update.
Yes.
And there's a newsletter too.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Hi, Rachel Kanalka. Uh, just a couple of, of bits of feedback really on everything that was discussed tonight. I got to attend the, uh, inclusion presentation on Monday and it was eye-opening, honestly. Um, I personally don't have a child right now who's classified or receiving any sort of special services from the district, but as just a parent in the district, I find it very critical that we move forward and become more inclusive as a school district. And some of the information that was shared was really eye-opening to me. Um, not just how Middletown compared to other districts in New Jersey, but honestly, how New Jersey compares to the rest of the country and to the world. Like, there is a lot of ground we have to make up, and I think we have a real opportunity here to do that. And I also think, based on the feedback that bubbled up in Form One and Form Two so far, it's becoming clear to me, um, that inclusion is a hot button topic for our, our district right now, and I think we're at a really good point to be able to take the learnings that we have, um, the expert who presented, and really wrap them into strategic planning and make it something that we do make a goal for us moving forward. I know it wasn't taped, which bummed me out because I know a lot of you were there, but the ones that weren't, he was an amazing speaker and really explained some complex stuff in a very understandable way. I don't know if it would be possible, you know, here, no, um, for him to come back again and present to the entire board possibly, but I think, given how important this is to our district, I know internally and also from the public's perspective, it would really be beneficial for you all to hear what he has to say. So if that's possible, I, I strongly encourage it. Um, on the Middletown history piece that I heard updated, um, with curriculum, I think that's fantastic. We live in an amazing area. Um, I know like the Corsi Park field trips that the kids do in elementary school are so meaningful and so valuable, so I love hearing that we're doing more to kind of really educate our kids, and I look forward to learning more myself, um, if I get to go on some of those trips. I think it also contributes to like a shared pride in our town, which is always welcome and always needed. I think we all live in an amazing area. We don't always appreciate it, though. So if we help the kids understand that, inevitably, the parents will too, and I think it'll just help the community overall. As it relates to the bus, and I appreciate you guys looking into that more. I know I was the one who spoke about it at the last meeting. Honestly, I think at this point, it would be state lobbying that would need to happen by members of the public and also potentially a band of school districts together possibly to say, this is something we need the state to mandate because, you know, supply and demand, no company is going to necessarily put more money into something unless they have to, if it doesn't affect their business. So we need to affect their business, and I think the only way to do that is at the state level. So to the extent that, um, any of the lobbying stuff, I know, um, Mr. Giomo was doing some of that stuff at some point. I don't know if it's still on the table that there's topics that he would do that for. I would add this one to that. For the shared services meeting that's coming up, um, maybe, I, I don't understand the legality or how this works, but I know sometimes when a new development is put into place, the developer is required to pay into the school district. Maybe work with them to find out, how does that happen? What are the parameters? And how do we get ahead of this a little more so that when something goes in front of our planning board before it is approved, there is some sort of scoping that's done that determines the additional strain that would be put on the school system and how do we get compensated for that? So we're not, you guys aren't kind of caught dealing with whatever gets put in place and then we're scrambling to find placements for these kids with no extra money. For strategic planning, I just wanted to say, I thought Form Two was really, really valuable. I know that the format was a little confusing in the beginning and people didn't quite know what to expect, but given that it was so open-ended and the groups were kind of, we had parameters to work within, but everybody came up with their own language. I loved hearing what the other groups came up with, and I thought it was really neat that so many similar topics came to get, we all had all written them down, so nobody could have like cheated, you know, and, and copied what the group before them said. There were a lot of similarities, and I thought that was really positive, and I think it is an important step in the process so that as we make plans, we can refer back to that. The one thing I would say is, I know people are kind of chomping at the bit to get to the point where we're talking about, what are the things we could do and what do I think about them? Or how could they impact me or how could they impact the district? And I know that we may have been more than, uh, Schoolhouse was expecting, and if it is a situation where they're scrambling to get ready for this next forum, the third forum, and they have so much to go through that they can't do it right, delay the forum. Like, put it out to January so that they really have more information, they can present a better summary and really tell us as members of the public in advance what to expect so we can come more prepared to be able to discuss. And I think if it's not at Form Three, if it can be maybe at a Form Four, lay out, here are the, the five things that we are considering to do, and we want to give the public the chance to walk up to the mic, one option at a time, and state their pros and cons so that there can be a better kind of holistic evaluation. I know a lot of what was happening this past week was a lot of knee-jerk reactions to plans that weren't even real and there was no detail. I don't know how you can rule anything out when there's not anything written down yet. But people do want to share their opinion, and I think if it's done in a way where, here are the five things that we might do, let's talk about one, what do you think? Let's talk about two, what do you think? Just so people feel that they have their chance to do that. I think setting expectations is probably the most important thing. And if they can get any additional reading material out in advance of the meeting more than a couple of hours, like I printed that deck and, and brought it over, and I know it was a lot of work to compile. And I was very appreciative to have it in front of me at the meeting, but I think if I had had like four days, it would have been a lot more fruitful of a discussion because I would have been able to digest it more. And then the only other, uh, well, two more things, I guess. Um, I think the newsletter is fantastic. I know you guys talked about it. I think it's wonderful to get to see the great things that are going on in schools other than my kids' home, and I think it's important for all of us as Middletowners to recognize what's happening in the other schools. So that newsletter and the fact that it comes out with such frequency, I don't know how you're generating all that in that short amount of time, but it's awesome. So I, I appreciate you guys doing that and putting the effort to do that. I think it really helps. And then, uh, for Luca, I didn't know him or his family directly. Um, I do, uh, sympathize with them greatly. I, I think it would be incredible if at some point, Middletown as a district does something to honor him at every school, not just at Harmony where he attended. And I don't even know what that would be, um, but I think it's something worth thinking about maybe in the new year, if we can all have a day of gold for Luca where we all wear a gold shirt or something, somehow to honor his memory for his parents. Um, I think it would be very meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Middletown Friends of Diverse Learners for hosting the inclusion seminar that we keep talking about all night, and I'm sorry I haven't ended earlier.
That's a great segue. Thank you. Uh, McGally Milton here for the Middletown Friends of Diverse Learners. Uh, I really wanted to come tonight and thank everybody, just thank the board, especially the district leadership. A big, big thanking to Dr. Teerman, who did so much of the heavy lifting, uh, to get us to this venue and to help us get the word out. Um, like Rachel was saying, that newsletter is fantastic. Uh, we had such a great turnout. Um, and, uh, I don't know, for the people who came, I mean, I, I feel I'm still processing that information. It was just so much, it's one thing to know that New Jersey is in great on inclusion and, you know, and even where we are, but it's another thing to really see the numbers and what it's mean and, and how do you do it? And, and there's so many more questions, I think, that, um, that really need to be looked into. And when we first had this idea, it's been in the works for about a year because we had gotten the feedback from parents, um, and so we had wanted to put something together. So it's kind of like crazy how the timing aligned to do it now, we're in the middle of the strategic plan, and then to realize that to do inclusion well, you really do need to kind of build your structures, allocate your resources or professionals and your facilities. So it is, you know, you know, time to think about all these things. So, uh, I just think the stars aligned and, you know, Dr. Teerman coming on board. So it's really, um, you know, I don't know, meant to be, I suppose, but a lot to think about, and I really appreciate everyone's openness, um, in that. Um, I did want to just say, uh, just publicly because I, I felt that the last forum, we heard the word, uh, inclusion a lot. That was really nice to hear. Uh, but I also heard that people don't really know what it means, that they think it's just a nice kind of kumbaya word. And, um, the speaker defined for us that the word actually means, um, that students with special needs are included in the classroom for eighty percent or more of the day. And so that is really, you know, a big, big idea. And so, um, how we do that is, is really, and how you do it well because it's not just about putting children in a place, it's about putting them in a place where they can really learn. So I think, um, even though there are no proposals yet on the table, I guess I hope that, um, this is the time to start thinking about what model that we have in the future will support that type of, of vision. And I, I do feel like I heard those beliefs in the last forum about the, you know, um, the values that we have as a community. So, um, so anyway, I'm all for the idea of, of maybe having more collaboration with this, um, with this expert. And, uh, if slowing the process down to learn more about this in the meantime, to get it right is what's needed, maybe that's a good way to go. But I, uh, again, just thank you so much and, um, I appreciate all of your participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So my name is Michelle Pitser and I'm a parent of a North student and a Port Monmouth elementary student. And the reason I'm here tonight is to just express my concern about the fact that there's a group called Turn Point USA, which is, um, having a chapter open near Middletown High School North. I became aware of it in September when we found out about the curriculum that were gonna be offered. And I did some research into it, um, to find out what it was about. And I was alarmed. And I just wanted to share with everyone that I'm very concerned about it and, uh, make you aware as well. So, uh, basically, my objection is that they present themselves as a, a political organization or a young conservatives organization. But in actuality, when you look on the Anti-Defamation League's, uh, website or the Southern Poverty Law Center's website, they're listed under their hate group watch. And, uh, the bottom line is that it's very concerning and alarming that they would be here in our school. Um, the founder is somewhat of a bottomed-down McCarthy who targets educators by blacklisting them on his website called Professor Watch. And he got a start in, in doing this in universities. Um, when students are disgruntled or don't like their teachers' political beliefs that they may post on social media or, you know, in private or amongst their friends, um, he retaliates by listing them on this, uh, Professor Watch site. Um, if a teacher teaches about climate change or, uh, common sense fund regulation